We're getting ready to have a town hall, family meeting in just a few minutes. But what we want to do now is remember again why we're here. And I had a scripture I was going to read, but it was way too long and we'll get it next time. But one of the things I want to challenge us as Christians is to not be afraid. Just do not be afraid, not only to live your life for Christ, but to go and talk to others. Christ has given us a wonderful, wonderful gift. And quite frankly, we have no greater joy, we have nothing to be afraid of, and we have nothing to be ashamed of. So for me, I want to encourage you this week to continue to make Christ the center of your life, the one you love more than your husband or your wife, your son or your daughter. And in doing that, Christ will grow in you and you will know for a fact that we have something such a wonderful gift to share with the world. Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we come to you and we want to just lift your holy name. We want to praise you. We want to praise the design that you've had on this earth, everything that's on it. The wisdom that you have shown and that you continue to show us each day is just overwhelming. Lord, help us to yield ourselves to you and our hearts to you and to reach deep inside every day and look at it, and help us to look at who we are and to examine our hearts and our souls, those places that you can look. And when we see the filth that may be there and the sin that's in our life, that we'll remember it and that we'll look to you for guidance in how to rid that filth out of our lives. Because God, you've told us that if we will just confess our sins to you, that you'll cleanse us, that your blood will wash us as white as snow. Lord, help us to live lives that are white as snow and to love you always. In Jesus' name, amen. All right. Just a quick note, we are going to end promptly at 12 o'clock. There'll be a bell ring at 11:55. If you hear it, that's what it's for. There is story time for ages two to five over here to my left and your right, if you're looking in front. But anyway, ages two to five. Anyway, we're going to start now with a prayer. And if y'all would, just please bow your heads. Our Father in Heaven, we just, again, we want to praise you and we want to ask that you bless our congregation, that you strengthen us and that you help us to make wise decisions and to live as a family and to know that we in this community that are growing need to be a light and continue to be a light to the community. Help us to fan the flames of that light such that it grows and that everyone around us can see and such that each one of us, no matter what, are in love with Jesus and that the difference they see in who we are is our deep love for you. In Jesus' name, amen. Thanks so much for being a part of this meeting. Like Tom said, we're going to try to get you out of here hopefully a little bit before 12. I just wanted to not only thank you for being here, but something's on my heart that I just wanted to share with you. Now, I don't know about you, but Easter seems quite some time ago to me. Does it? Do you remember Easter? It was a while back, right? And I don't know how you are, but for me, I start thinking about Easter some days before that and you know, I kind of get into it. So I'm thinking about triumphal entry and that chaotic week and then just all kinds of things seem like they go wrong and they are wrong and there's crucifixion and then everyone is just absolutely surprised and amazed at resurrection, right? Wow, resurrection, Jesus is alive. And that's Easter for me. And then kind of life goes back to normal. You know, I celebrate Easter and then life kind of goes back to normal. Does it do that for you? Okay? That is not what happened to the disciples, okay? Life did not go back to normal for them, all right? Jesus came back and he appeared to them and they were, they could see that he was alive, okay? But then he didn't stay with them all the time. He didn't walk around with them like he had before. He would appear to these and then he would be gone. And then some days would go by and then somebody else might come and say, hey, Jesus appeared to us on the way to Emmaus, okay? And then some other days would, that went on for almost a month and a half. A month and a half, almost 40 days that went on, okay? And then he comes to them and he says, I want you to wait in Jerusalem, Holy Spirit's going to come. And then he ascended. He ascended. And then what happened the next day after he ascended? Nothing. Okay? Nothing happened the day after he ascended. In fact, for nine days, he wasn't with them, he didn't appear when he had ascended, and nine days, okay? And then what happened? Pentecost. And you're thinking, Jake, this is really not what the meeting's about. Where are you going with this? Today is Pentecost. Today, May 19th, is Pentecost, 50 days after we celebrated Easter. Amazing things happened then, a huge infusion of the Holy Spirit on those disciples slash apostles. And another thing happened, and that was all that with that Holy Spirit coming and that wind and those flames, that attracted a great crowd, okay? And amazing things happened beginning with that day, did they not? Amazing things happened. So here we are. I haven't heard great wind, you're not seeing flames, but I'm telling you, in some tiny way, this is Pentecost, okay? And we're praying, we have been praying, that amazing things are happening here at this church and will happen with this building and with the other things that are in the works right now, and many people will come to Christ. Chad?
Also, he forgot this part. We did not plan for this to happen on Pentecost. We tried to do it two other dates, but God had other plans. That's what made him think about it because we really tried. So, all right. The New Braunfels Church of Christ, this is our vision, to be Christ's body, living transformed, God-driven lives, inviting others into the life of Jesus. And this is what we want to be about. Everything that we do and say is going to hinge on this. 2 Corinthians 5:20 says that we are therefore Christ ambassadors, as though God were making his appeal through us. And then he says, we implore you on Christ's behalf to be reconciled to God. And that is our vision for what we are called to do, not only to each other, but to the world. Okay, this means a couple of things, building, reaching, transforming, and worshiping. What this means is with God's power and resources, we will be helping build his kingdom. First in ourselves, then to others, we'll be reaching out, we'll be reaching up, out and down, up to God, out to the world, and down to the least of these. And we and others and everything in creation will become more amazingly, more like what God intended. So for building, this is what we're thinking. We want to build atmospheres where guests want to be a part of what we're doing. We want to build life groups that love, laugh, learn, and serve. We want to build leaders in families and schools and teams and workplaces and at church. We want to build pathways and practices to healthy, mature, Christ-like living. We want to build engaging, well-rounded teachers, mentors, and worship leaders. We've got a lot of building projects that we've been working on and we realize that we've been putting time in these and we're going to expend more time and energy into these and we hope to accelerate some of this in the future. We're also going to be building Good News Shareers, that's you and I, outreach communities and missionaries. And one thing about that is that we are missionaries, not just overseas, but we want us to think like missionaries where we live. We want to build strong foundations for raising up children, youth, and families. We want to build productive, empowering communications and systems. And every once in a while, we want to do it in a building. We've got a lot of building projects and some we've been working on and some are kind of new and we also have another one that we'll discuss here in a little bit. We have a long history of reaching. There's a lot of opportunities. We do things worldwide and also local and you can look at those. And if you're not involved, there's a lot of opportunities and more on the way for you to be involved in reaching and it'll be good for you to do that. Ask Carl Jenkins, who went and reached out a little bit beyond his comfort zone and God grabbed a hold of him. It'll be good for God's kingdom, actively reaching out locally with a global perspective. And I think that is so important, reaching out where we find ourselves, but realizing, and this is why I think it's important to have that global perspective, that realizing we're not done until we reach the world. So that keeps that fire there. But we want you to be active where you're at, reaching and realizing that our goal is to reach the world. We're going to do some transforming, our lives into what God has in mind. We want our guests to become committed disciples. We want seekers into finders. And we want to transform difficulties into peace and joy in our marriages and raising up children and men's and women's issues and work and in purpose and in our lives as a whole. We want them to be transformed. And as we continue to reach and to build, God will continue to bring about more transformation, wonderful changes, growing each of us and all of us into his image. Finally, in this vision, we see a vibrant worship assembly that builds us up, that celebrates life in Jesus, and that encourages us all to follow him closer. And we want worship that is done in ways that bring our Lord joy and praise, allow God to speak to our guests and to each of us, that encourage us to bring our gifts for his glory, that accommodate growth, and that help each one of us grow more and more into his image. This is the big vision of what we want to be and to do as the New Braunfels Church of Christ.
One of the things to point out is that what Chad mentioned is a lot of the big picture stuff. And our plans are in the coming months to continue to have some of these meetings with you and start breaking this down into ideas and exactly what it means. I think Tom's the one that talks about putting feet on it or something like that, put meat on the bones. And so in the coming months, we plan on doing that as well. I appreciate Jake's thoughts. He mentioned those to me a couple of days ago and it was like one of those awe moments for me. As far as a community life center, a couple more things. And then after this, what we'll do is we'll open it up to some Q and A. And if you have any questions for us, the elders will try to answer those. And if we don't have answers, we'll get those answers for you and we'll get back to you specifically or we can publish them in a written format. But the community life center, what is the purpose? We asked a while back, you know, what can we do with this center? And somebody presented to us a couple of scriptures that resonated. It says, therefore encourage one another and build each other up, just as in fact you are doing, 1 Thessalonians chapter 5 verse 11. And what we're talking about here is for this life center, we all, we know it's going to be used for the fellowship and learning opportunities. As many of you know already, we have the gymnasium, or we can call it the community life center. There is a partition in the middle where it could be used for two classrooms. We have, somebody wrote down, we have a world-class kitchen. Not that that is the most important part of the facility, but the opportunities that can be used with that is huge, I mean, to be used for the community. And then we'll have a youth center in there as well that is going to be a blessing to our young people. And so as far as the use of the building, we will always have activities there. We'll always have opportunities there for the church itself. And those things are important because it contributes to the health of the congregation. And so I think one of the notes that was written down on my presentation is that for many of years, one of the major complaints that we have heard here about this facility are the bathrooms. And again, this is not the most important part of this presentation, but I think it's, I thought it was rather funny, but are the bathrooms. And so someone said that we went ahead and took a tip from Buc-E's and made sure that we had really, really nice bathrooms that you can be proud of to go in there. But there's also room in there for cooks. It's a dream kitchen, not only for ourselves, but for others. It's a pretty high ceiling and I know that's one of the comments that we heard once, why such a tall ceiling? And there's various reasons for, especially for sports activities, that we had anything lower, the damage that would be caused to the lighting system would just, to be repairing it over and over, would not be cost-effective. So it had to be made in such a way that it accommodates many different activities. But specifically, the thought that was, what we thought about is that it was designed to hold all the extra amount of God's praises that we'll be sharing in that building. And there's more spaces for meetings and classes and again, for us to have fun. And the one thing I wanted to alleviate as well was the concern for lack of closet space. The Bucks went and searched every little area in that building and have found four additional storage facilities or storage spaces and so that we can have even additional, even more space. And then we're looking at a different option that will open up another classroom for classroom space, I mean, excuse me, storage space. So now that it's coming together, it doesn't look like that will be an issue. But again, going back to the fellowship and learning opportunities, those will always take place. And again, that happens in a healthy congregation. But what we want to talk about as well, on top of that, is another scripture that someone gave to us, Matthew 25 verse 37 and following. Then the righteous will answer him, Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed you or thirsty and give you something to drink? When did we see you as a stranger and invite you in or needing clothing and clothe you? When did we see you sick or in prison and go to visit you? The king will reply, truly I tell you, whatever you did for one of the, one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me. And so the other aspect of this building is we want to have a missional component or use it for missional opportunities. And so what does it mean? A few months ago, we gave you an opportunity, or we gave you some handouts about the Family Promise program. It's a way in which we help homeless people in this community with a place to stay and a place to clean up and a place to rest so that during the week, their children can go to school and then the mom and dads can go find jobs or get job training. And so what we have done is we have committed one week a quarter to allow that facility to be used. And so there will be other facilities throughout the year, I mean, throughout the community that will be used, 13 others in fact. And so it only will require us to use that facility once a week. And I believe it's from seven till the following morning at seven, seven to seven. So it'd be from seven in the evening to seven at night. And Kathy Buck is heading that up for us and finding all the research, all the information that we need to make that a reality. And so it'll also be used for the seeds events and other community ideas. And so a very important component of this facility for us and has always been about everything that we have tried to do in terms of building, is how do we use it to bless this community? How do we use it to bless and further the kingdom of God? And so not only will we have activities for ourselves and to bless ourselves, but we'll have equal amounts, if not more, opportunities for this community. So do you have any ideas? We want to hear them. Have you been out in the community and have noticed things that are amiss, things that are needed, things that this congregation can serve in and areas they can be involved in? We want to know those ideas. We truly want to know those ideas. And so we encourage you, if you do have some of those ideas, contact Jake or contact Sandy or contact me at the church office. We are trying to gather together all the information that we can to try to put together something that blesses and furthers the kingdom. And so when do we get there? When does it start? The estimated completion date for, and this is, hold on, I pushed that button by accident. This is causing Chris Buck to quiver in his boots. And I say that lovingly because we were in the office the other day and we told him, Chris, we need the building July 25th. We need the building July 25th. VBS kicks off, VBS slash Impact kicks off the next weekend. And I think I saw Amy here. And so we're sitting there and Chris was talking to us and we told him that and all of a sudden, while he was talking to us, he starts flipping his hat in midair, catching it over and over and over and then tapping his foot and like, Chris, I think you're nervous. And so, but that is the estimated completion date is July 25th, all right? So what still remains? Well, for Gary, it's the easy, his part is pretty much over. What remains for Gary is the outside sidewalks, railings and canopies still need to be installed, landscaping and the parking lot. That's it, on the outside. And so that should be done here rather soon. Huh? Oh, rather soon, I thought I heard somebody say something. Rather soon. So what's left on the inside? And maybe that's just why Chris is starting to get nervous. We still need to put in the vent hoods and the equipment that goes inside of the kitchen. We need to put up cabinets, although some of the cabinets are already installed, but there still remains more. The final electrical work, I think he told me that they were about 90% done, but there is still 10% that needs to be done and that's a rather important part of it. The final painting, the HVAC, which is the heating and AC. And then the floors also need to be installed and that's going to be time-consuming, not only because of the, not only you have to install the flooring, but they also have to put in the striping for all the different sporting activities. And he also mentioned that we have to install the basketball and scoring systems and have the volleyball stuff and some new game, I don't know, that combines badminton and tennis and, huh? Did somebody mention it? Pickleball. I have no idea what pickleball is. It's an ACU thing? Okay. But it's supposedly a big hit. But that's not the most important part. It's just one of the extras that we're getting in there. And so that's what remains inside and outside. It doesn't, the inside list doesn't seem to be a long, but it is time-consuming. And right now, they're doing what's called trim work and so that's time-consuming as well. So July 25th is the estimated completion date. The total cost for the completion of this building is 1.98 million. That's what it's going to cost to finish it, all right? To date, right now, the balance remaining on the project, the balance that's remaining on the project is $580,000. So my math real quick, what we're talking about, we've spent about 1.4 so far, give or take, based on my quick math. What this does, it represents about 29% of the project and it's actually in line with the plans that we have in place for Phase 1 and Phase 2. And so again, we have about $580,693, not about, exactly to as of Friday, how much we have left to pay off on this project. The campaign pledges that came in, remember during renewal, this congregation committed to bringing in $930,430 in renewal pledges. To date, as of Monday, last Sunday, you have provided us $169,538. That's how much has come in of the $930,000. So it's coming in well. This year of the amounts that we projected we would receive, the first year, so far, we've received about 44% of what we estimated we would receive in the first year. That's January through December. So we're on pace. So that what remains is from the amounts that you've committed to and the amounts that have come in, we have a balance of $760,000 and some change that we are expecting to come in if the pledges come in as the commitments were made. So as you look at that, we're still anticipating about $760,000 coming in, give or take. We know things change. And the balance on our project is $580,000. If the contributions come in like they're supposed to or like they were committed, then we're going to have plenty of funds to pay off this project. One thing to remember, this is a three, this was a three-year commitment. So the balance of 760 was committed over a three-year period. So it's not going to come in all at one time. But the bills are, Chris is going to want to get paid and eat so he can eat and so will Gary and some of the other subcontractors. So we'll have to pay that $580,000 this year. So before TL retired, he was kind enough to help us establish a short-term line of credit with Sage Bank to be able to pay off the balance of the project, whatever that may be when the final bill comes in. What we've committed and we've said all along is that we're going to use the renewal funds that come in to pay off that short-term loan, all right? Now, enough about money. There's a grand opening that's coming. July 25th is hopefully the estimated completion date. The week of August, first week of August is going to be VBS and Impact. And so soon thereafter, we will start with, actually, we'll start planning for a grand opening way before then. We're projecting for the grand opening to be around the first, excuse me, the second week of August. And Marilyn Jenkins has volunteered to be the team leader. She's the one that was the team leader during the renewal celebration. And so we thought it was a natural progression to ask her to lead that up as well. She did a wonderful job. And so what we plan on doing for the grand opening is we actually, it's going to be a weekend event. It's going to be a Saturday and Sunday event. Saturday's celebration will be with the community. It will involve neighbors and the community leaders and our friends and everyone in the area. One of the things that we're going to be doing in June is we're going to be meeting with city leaders and we're going to discuss with them about the challenges and the things they see in this community. What needs addressing? How can the church be a blessing in this community by, you know, they know a lot more than we do. And so we plan on meeting with them to try to get some insight as to how this congregation can continue to bless this community. And so be in prayer for that, that the meeting with the community leaders goes well. And our goal in all of this, in all that we do, is to bless people. It is to further the kingdom and it is to bring others to Jesus Christ. And so we want to make sure we keep that up high on our priority list, is that is, that we're trying to put out the message of Jesus Christ. And so help us and pray for us that our meeting will be fruitful and with the city. But anyway, on that Saturday, it's going to be a grand celebration, sort of like a fall festival and inviting like every leader in the community and our neighbors and friends. And we're going to have a grand celebration. On Sunday, Sunday will be the dedication service. Sunday will be the day that we get together as a congregation and it's going to be a special thanks, a special day of thanks, a special day of petition and dedication, that we dedicate properly this building to God and that we focus on the real purpose of this facility again, and that is to further the kingdom of God. And so that's going to happen, like I said, around the second week of August for over the weekend. And so we get back again to the vision, to be Christ's body, living transformed, God-driven lives, excuse me, to be God's body, living transformed, God-driven lives and invite others to Jesus. There was absolutely no way that we could have done this building without allowing yourselves to be used by God. God's the one to get the glory and the praise and the honor. God used us as individuals to make this happen. And so there ought to be a great amount, I mean, there ought to be praising and singing to God and just offering up all the praise to him for all that he has done for us in this, in this one aspect of this church's life. And it will be a wonderful moment. It'll be a wonderful place and a wonderful moment, that day that we can meet in that facility and use it to build relationships, not only with each other, but build relationships with people that don't know Jesus yet and build relationships with people that are, again, that are far off and being able to build relationships that will bless this kingdom. It will be a wonderful place that reaches, that helps welcome, the lens of helping hand into the community and can make things better spiritually and also physically for the kingdom of heaven and a place that we can all come together and give God all the glory. Because in the end, that is what it's about, is giving God all the glory. And so we personally, as the elders, we'd like to, I mean, we earnestly thank you. Don't want to use a big pat on the back and prideful and all that, that's not what this is about. this is about. It's about allowing ourselves and offering ourselves up to God's call, and standing up and saying, "I will do my part," and we thank you. We will close, actually, we will have a Q and A now, and then, as long, you know, we'll go for a few more minutes, and then, the elder that's able to answer the question will answer it, and then we'll have a closing prayer that Joe will provide here in a few moments. And so, without any further, anyone have a question? We can get the handheld mic. We have Gary's here that can help us answer building questions. We have Sheila that can help us ask.
I feel like Phil Donahue. Okay, we have a question here in the audience. She's got two questions.
First, I'd like to know, when do we get to go in and look at the building? We were supposed to a couple of times, and it was canceled each time. I mean, the second question is, a report on any interest in the land that we have for sale? We've heard nothing.
Okay, she didn't use the mic. Yeah, I know, some people. The questions are, when are we going to get to go in the building? Because they were canceled both times we were supposed to go in, and the interest on the land that we have for sale? What is the situation there? And if you have a question, raise your hand, and I'll come to you.
Yeah, the reason why we had to postpone it is because a lot of the, there you are, Marjorie, a lot of the equipment, cabinets and tiling, a lot of stuff came in that just got stored in there real fast, and so, it was hard to clean up and get it ready. And so, they're starting to use some of that stuff, and so, it's getting smaller. And so, I'll talk to Chris this week and see when the next date that we can go in there. I just want to make sure it's safe, and that's, I mean, you'll be impressed when you're able to go in there, because, I mean, I go in there every day, and I see something different, and it's really impressive. So, we'll get with Chris and find out when the next date is.
Interest on the land?
Yeah. Jake's going to help answer, answer that question, and I can help answer that as well.
Regarding the property.
I have a map as well to show some.
Okay. That's actually two, hopefully, everybody's aware that that, right now, that's actually two pieces of property, because Alyssa Way, the construction of Alyssa Way split our original piece of property. The most recent update is that the city, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, passed a major thoroughfare plan, okay? And part of that plan is the extension of 1863 through the big part of our property, okay? Right through the middle of that 8.53 acres. So, we've been meeting with the city on that. Our latest meeting was with the Planning and Zoning Commission, because that road is going to go through our property. And so, what we did was, we had some discussions with the city and with some people that are representing us in that regard. And so, right now, the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended, through our initiation, that the property that is going to be on either side of that, future extension will be zoned commercial, because it's not going to be big enough for us to build anything on of any significance.
Just, just this part here is going to be commercial. This part here is in Northwoods, and so, we didn't want to upset our neighbors, and we wouldn't do that. So, we will leave that as residential property, R1. And so, this from, I'm trying to draw a line, this is what would be turned over into commercial property.
Right. Now, there, there's a few more complications with that, and we can get with you after about that, but we're working with the neighbors and with the city on those sorts of things. We don't know when 1863 is going to go through there, but the property has been for sale and is for sale. So, when we get an offer that's a good offer, we'll sell that. Is that, is that good enough, Marjorie?
No, did you, I mean, did you have another question? I mean, we can follow up with?
There has been some interest, but only from investors, and so, investors are going to pay a low price, because they don't know exactly what's going to happen.
An important part, something to stress, is that road that Jake was talking about, that thoroughfare plan, this road here, there's absolutely nothing, unfortunately, there's absolutely, there's nothing we can do about it. That road is going in there whether we protest or not. And so, what that does, it's going to take away, when the city comes in and takes away land to build that road, it's going to be about 1.77 acres of land are taken away from us. So, that really then shrinks down. So, if, just imagine, where's Brian Hoker? Is it 90 or 120 feet wide? But somewhere between 90, yeah, it's a four-lane road, so anywhere between 90 to 120 feet of land right here will be taken away from us. As you can see, that messes up the property. They'll pay for us, yeah, there's some complications in that. As long as we hold on to it, don't replat, don't do certain things, eventually, yes, yeah.
Victor, one of the things I've known about here in this community, a big need, especially here in the short-term future, with ART, with the bus and everything, service going away, what have we done in the areas of transportation? Because a lot of the people we want to help need a ride. They cannot afford a car. They need rides to different places, or they're getting older, and they shouldn't be driving.
That's, that's one of the... That's easy, that's on the list of ideas now.
Get with Jake, tell him that's one of the things that we can do. Or Sandy, or call the office, or, any other questions? Raise your hand, and I'll come to you. You got one? All right. Y'all should all sit together.
You're getting your exercise. I know that you're involved in a, with all the other ministers, basically. Is there any type of an intercity league? Well, like, our facility's going to be great for basketball, great for other sports. What about the other churches? And putting together some type of a league? That would keep a lot of kids involved, and if you get the kids to church, you get the parents to church.
Yes, there are those leagues, and that was one of the discussions. Those kind of questions, I mean, those are good, but if you have suggestions like that, see Jake or Sandy, because we want to know how it can be used, and some of those thoughts, we've thought, and we didn't mention them, but any ideas you've got for that? I mean, let us know, because we want it to be used in the community. I mean, that would, we really do. I mean, we don't want it to be for us. We want it to be used.
Regarding the basketball, I've talked to Ricky Gobert. He's at First Baptist, and they're involved with upwards basketball, so I just need to keep in contact with him.
Victor, when that property sells, whenever that is, will the revenue from that property automatically go to our building program?
The sale of the property will go to pay off the loan, yes, and then, revenue of the property will go off, will go to start planning for the next phase. And we talked about, we gave a church a presentation six, eight months ago, I can't remember the exact date, I'll have to look it up, where we talked about taking an investment part of it. I don't know what, I don't remember the amount that we mentioned right offhand, to invest into the congregation for what we call building the body. It could be reorganizing, it could be, if we had to support, bringing in another staff member for like children's ministry, or things of that nature. So, we hadn't decided the specifics in that, but we told the church about eight months, six, eight months ago, there would be a small portion of that. But if the property sells, that portion that we're talking about is about five percent of the total amount that potentially could come in. That includes the Northwoods piece, the commercial property, and then the Alyssa Way, that little Highway 46 properties.
If you use that money to use the building up at the body, then it fits the pro, it fits the format then, that it was for the building program.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, that, yeah, that's right. Good, good, yeah.
Two questions. Our parking, is our parking going to be okay here? And secondly, a number of churches in the community rent their fellowship halls for $250 an evening. Will we be doing that?
Yeah, that's, we're actually putting together a use policy for the facility for non-church events, and where, let's just say, some basketball league wants to come in, and a lot, homeschoolings are always needing facilities, things like that, where they know what the prices are going to be, contracts, they sign contracts and all that. So, yes, ma'am, we are looking at that. As far as parking, there's two, two things we're looking at. One is, we're going to have a parking engineer, I guess you'd call them, come in and reevaluate, evaluate all our parking and reconfigure. We did some work the other day, and according to that small analysis, it looks like we could gain about 23 to 25 percent more parking if we reconfigure the parking, and it could go from instead of being diagonal, or parking straight in parking. And I know that's not preferred, but that's a way to increase by about 30 something, no, I'm sorry, about 30 something, yeah, about 35, 40 extra spots, which, it's a lot. So, actually, and the other part is, I forgot to mention, that if we reconfigure, and then, in this area here, when this area here opens up, I think it was, I don't know if it's Chris or Gary mentioned to me, that the parking here will equal the parking that we're going to have out on Highway 46 when that project was, would have been completed. So...
And also, Jake was saying, part of the thing to alleviate crowding like that would be adding an additional service, Worship Assembly.
Yeah.
And so, that'd be another way.
Yeah, you saw it up there, that, yeah, exactly. One way, easiest way to alleviate parking, by all the studies that we have looked at, is go into a second service. And so, that is on the table for, not sure exactly when, but it's on the table, go into a second service. Yeah, we're, another option we're looking at is working with a couple of landowners and see if, when we do sell the property, we could buy some of their land and then relocate them somewhere else. That's also a possibility, and that'll give us additional parking there.
Any other questions?
We're not going to go over, somebody has been dedicated to push the button, to let us know when it's time to start winding down.
All right.
Push the button.
Yeah, it'll be pushed here shortly.
It's only a few seconds, I think, a minute.
Not a question, but just want to say that we, wanting a team to help with the celebrations that we're going to have that weekend, and I'd really like people to come to me that want to do it without me having to go in and beg.
Don't make her beg, please.
Yeah, and those that you'd helped with the other one, if you're willing to help her with this one, that would be great, because you already know what you're doing. But anyone else that can help her, because that's really important. We do want to make that a big deal, and, because that's significant, and we've talked about that, that we want the first big thing that we do, it may be used before that, but the first big thing that we want used is for the community, because we want that, I mean, really. And then, the next is for us, and there's some significance in doing it that way. So, anyways. No, I do. I, no, they don't.
The parking, when you're talking about repaving or whatever you're planning to do, does that include the Caliche pit out here?
No, the reason why is because if we, according to what we've been told, that we repave, we paved that Caliche pit, that we'll end up having to, what's that called? Retention pond?
A retention pond, yeah.
Come in, and so, that will add, water retention. That will cause issues that, that will cost us a lot of money. So, we are told it has to stay, we can put pavers or some sort of, that allows water to seep through, yeah, but water seep through, but we can't pave it, yeah.
We're going to make them park, we'll let them park in nicer places. Yeah. Okay. We're going to, we're going to sell parking spaces. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Joke.
That was a joke.
I was just kidding.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Two hundred a month. You got a first bid up there.
Do I hear three, three, three? No. Oh, just a sec.
I think if we stripe that Caliche pit, it would make a huge difference, because if you ever come in and don't go to class, which sometimes I do, I'm afraid to say, but if you come in and people are parked, there are so many spots, people don't park close enough together, and it drives Bubba and I crazy. So, we may come up here and just stripe it one weekend, because it's about to get to me. Every weekend we walk in, I'm like, "We are going to stripe this thing," because it wouldn't take anything, you know, just to do it, but that would be huge just to stripe it. And for the younger people that can walk, don't park right there by the door, you know, back up and park further out. We could all do this together. So, there you go.
Yeah, she is.
All right. It is 11:45, and we had committed to start winding down at 11:45, so we have time for maybe another?
Any pressing question that just cannot wait to, it's got to be asked. Yay, good, all right.
All right. Since, yeah, you can always email us, or call us, talk to us in person, any way you'd like to contact us. We're open to answering your questions, and again, if we don't know the answer on the spot, we'll find the answer for you. And so, feel free to contact us at any time. Again, once, we appreciate it, appreciate your patience with us. I want to do, I want to stress that in June, on top of my head, I can't remember the date right now, but we are going to have another one of these, and it'll be as short as this one, and it's going to continue to talk about the mission and some things that are coming up that you'll want to know about in September. All right? You really will want to know about this. So, I'm just trying to, yeah. And we'll have these throughout the year, and each time, it will be a different topic, and as we start, are able to communicate some things about. And so, be prepared, we'll have these short ones like this throughout the next few years. All right, we appreciate it, and we'll let Joe close us in prayer.
Dear Father, we, I'm to come before you, thanking you for life itself, and the most important thing, your Son, Jesus Christ, whom you sent to die on the cross for our sins. Dear Lord, we ask you to make our church a place where Jesus is praised and worshiped, and where it is lived in our lives as we go about each day. Dear Lord, teach us to seek holiness and humble us when we take our eyes off of you and I walk with you, because, dear Lord, the world pulls at us very hard, and we pray that you will be with this church as we go forward in our new vision, to make disciples of those around us. And, dear Lord, we hope that you will give us wisdom in all that we say and do, that we can accomplish your goals that you have set for this church here, and that we honor you and your Son in every way that we do. We pray that you will be with the community as we open up our facilities to them, that we can touch other lives that haven't been touched, that we can show them that we care about them and their lives, and that we can open up, that they become children of yours. Your Lord, as we leave this place, we pray that you will be with each of us as we walk. Help us to be the example you want us to be, and may we always give you the praise and honor and glory to your name, in Christ's name. Amen.